We'll illustrate the allegations and welcome Donna and Tim to speak to us about the coastal bike route.
Thank you. Should I be on this way? Is it that? My name is Tim Howard. I'm the director of the local nonprofit Transportation Choices Sunshine Coast. I made a presentation with the Gibson's and District Chamber of Commerce about the coastal bike route initiative. I should say I'm fighting for cool, so please don't mistake my lack of energy for a lack of interest in being here. You should have in your agenda a short, two-and-a-half-page presentation if you can. I'll be reviewing that briefly, and then Donna will be presenting a short video. So why are we here and what is the coastal bike route initiative? In essence, what we wish to achieve is a designated mapped bike touring route for the Lower Sunshine Coast that will serve as an attractant for bike tourists from the lower mainland, B.C., and parts further along. Many of you may be aware that cycling has become a growing part of the recreational sector. You may have noticed this past summer, there were probably more bike tourists on the road than previously experienced. People are already coming, and we like to capitalize on that by formalizing a bike route that will attract people. So our vision really is to have a signed designated bike route that will extend from a terminal at Landale to the terminal of Earl's Cove, and also be integrated into a broader route that will incorporate Powell River and a route on Vancouver Island. It can be called, the working title is, the Circle Route. At the bottom of the first page of the brief in there, you'll note that there are some real success stories out there. In essence, we think there is a very good business case to make from a straightforward point of view of local economic development. Quebec has a very well-known bike route, or sorry, bike touring facility known as the U.S. Vats, and it generates an estimated $200 million a year. Those are 2010 numbers. Oregon's bike touring infrastructure tracks up to $1.2 million tourists a year, and a smaller-scale bike route in the state between Maryland and Pennsylvania contributed an estimated $40 million to local communities along those routes. Now, of course, those numbers would have to be scaled to the Sunshine Coast, but the point is that there is a very real and viable bike tourism sector out there that other jurisdictions are taking advantage of. We're at what I'd call the very early stages of trying to advance this initiative. In essence, we're beginning to form partnerships, and what we're working towards, and we ask, if you will, from this presentation, is we're trying to establish a working group that includes staff from local governments so we can begin developing a designated route and get buy-in on that route at all local government community levels. So at present, this is a joint initiative, the Gibson's and District Chamber of Commerce, with Transportation Choices. We're working closely with the B.C. Cycling Coalition, the Powell River Cycling Association, other similar groups on Vancouver Island as well. Donna is very much meeting connections with local businesses here regionally as well as on the Vancouver Island. I should note that the B.C. Cycling Coalition has a formal provincial-wide cycletouring initiative. They're hoping to spearhead the creation of designated bike touring routes throughout B.C., and they see the Sunshine Coast as being one of the lead projects that they would like to undertake, so we anticipate being able to work with them on this project. On the second page there, we thought it would be helpful just to highlight how we think this initiative aligns very well with the current planning priorities, both at the broader Lower Sunshine Coast regional level, as set out in the lead vision document, and with specific elements of the Gibson's Trail Cycle Network master plan. In simple terms, we see this as being a sort of win-win situation. Local and regional planning objectives promote increased cycling and increased connectivity of cycling networks between communities, and that's precisely what we're trying to achieve with the bike route. So our plan, really at this stage, we want to establish a working group. We know we need to work with local governments, in particular, the S.C.R.D. I think will obviously play a key role. We'll have to engage with MOTI as well, but we really want to have a representative from each local government, from the staff level that we can work with, to begin mapping out a proposed route and begin the steps of getting buy-in, seeking official endorsement of the route, and ultimately towards the objective of having signage designation, et cetera, et cetera. The long-term plan involves promoting it, you know, on mobile-based apps that people can use to navigate the route, that will highlight local businesses, et cetera. That's down the road. So the purpose of this presentation really is to acquaint you with the initiative. Donna's going to show you a short video that I think will further illustrate the local economic benefits that this can generate. I'll remain for any questions you have, and as I said, the one ask and the deliverable that we're proposing for this presentation is to ask for your consideration of designating some staff time to the project. So I think it probably makes sense for Donna to take this seat now, and thank you very much.
This video, this is great video, put together by a gal named Sue from the Comox Valley Cycling Coalition, and I saw this in Victoria, and she kindly recut it to me into a shorter format suitable for the presentation. So, see.
Hello. My name is Willie Van Kemenet, and I'm a group travel specialist for Square One Travel in Courtney, B.C. One of the things I specialize in are cycling tours, which have grown over the years. And the very first cycling tour I did was the Sunshine Coast Loop, and I hope to talk to you a little bit about that today. One of our local cycling trips that we do, we always have an emergency support vehicle, and safety is always a concern. One of the things we always suggest to our participants is that they take the can bike two course, which is great for a cycling trip like this. The other thing we do is we have a sign that we bring. Originally, we were going to say, "Slow, slight cyclists ahead," but we changed that to "Caution cyclists ahead," and this just alerts other traffic that we are a cycling group, and that way we can respect each other. On our Sunshine Coast trip, which was a five-day trip, we actually contributed to the local economies. We did this by our hotel stays, our restaurant meals, we visited the bike shops, we visited art galleries, museums, and generally enjoyed what the areas that we visited had to offer. There was a significant contribution to the local economies along the way. When I first started looking into the Sunshine Coast Loop, it seemed like something I personally wanted to do, but a lot of people said it wasn't the greatest cycling route, and it was because it was boring, it was all highway, there were no shoulders, it was dangerous. Before we actually do a cycling route, we often do a dry run, and that's what we did in this case. And what we found was the Sunshine Coast Loop, especially between Gibson's and Powell River, was just the opposite. It was a wonderful area to visit, it was very scenic. We found that after the traffic left the ferry, there was very little traffic on the roads, so the shoulder issue really wasn't an issue. And because of the type of tours we do, we did spend a fair bit of time on the highway, but it was about 65%. The other 35% was secondary roads, and we saw some wonderful things while we're doing them. I just wanted to go through the Sunshine Coast Loop trip that we did. It was a five-day trip. I believe the total distance was about 250 kilometers, so we did about 50 kilometers a day on average. We ended up doing the loop in a counterclockwise direction. First day, we traveled from Courtney to Pollicum Beach. I stayed over there overnight, that was about 60 kilometers. And from there, we went from Pollicum Beach to Nanaimo on the ferry, and then to Gibson's. That was a total of just under 60 kilometers. We then went from Gibson's to Seashell, which was only 27, very short day, but there was a lot to see in that area. That was a fun day. The second-to-last day, we went from Seashell to Ruby Lake, had a very lovely stay there before we continued to Powell River and Courtney. So the last two days were 51 and 48 kilometers. We found this trip catered really well to the type of people that come on by short cycling trips. If I can just describe those to clients, I find them to be a wide range of age, but there often is a little gray hair in the group. We have very able people who do these types of trips regardless of age. So here we are at the Broken Spoke, and guess what? A group of cyclists just walked in to support the local economy. They're having coffee and muffins, and each one of these people have been on tours with me in the past. So I don't know if there's anything you guys want to say about our tours.
Willie is great. Lots of fun. Lots of fun. Well, Little Hills is sometimes different than Little Hill, but they're all fun. He's a good organizer.
Really well. Yes. And you can see left and right when you're cycling. It's just a nice pace.
These people are often looking for the work to be done for them. They don't want to do the research, which is often is what I do, and I guess my biggest contribution. And we like to see things. We call our tours the "Smell the Roses" Trips, where we focus on sightseeing, local tourist attractions. We don't go fast, we don't go long distances, we go moderate speed, moderate distance. We believe that the shortest route, it's not always the best route, so quite often we add distance to make it more enjoyable route. About four years ago, we approached economic development in Courtney with the idea of a farm cycle tour, and they actually embraced the idea, which was great, and we've been working with them ever since. It's developed an annual ride with about 300 participants. A lot of them are coming from other areas, which definitely boosts the economy. I think the same thing could happen with the Sunshine Coast Loop if the various economic development tourist boards embrace the idea, and it wouldn't be for a two-day farm cycle tour, it would be for the entire season. It could be done in a very inexpensive way, and I think it would provide a lot of economic developments to the various towns and villages and cities on the rest of the country. It would be great action.
I think Willie said it all, so I'll take it back over to Tim.
Sure, thank you. Okay, any questions or clarification there? Counselor Ray?
I was in a Vancouver just last night, and the very first person that I introduced myself to was from Squamish, and he mentioned I was just on the Sunshine Coast on the weekend biking. He just did the bike trip on the highway, so I was very impressed by that. So it confirms the point that was made earlier that there is a lot of cycling already going on on the roads. You know, also mention additionally that the Transportation Committee at the S.C.R.D. track has representation, and it's always a concern there, I know, to make sure the roads are safe to help support cycling across the coast.
Okay, I think what I would ask is, staff, if you'd just check in with either Donna or Tim to find out what the sort of time commitment implications might be, and then maybe come back to counsel, let it sort of brief us as to whether that's something that we can accommodate that request or not. Okay?
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, any inquiries at this point? Okay, so let's move on to reports, and we'll start with 5.1, and that's a report from the Chief Administrative Officer with respect to the Eagle Asset Strategy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the committee. What, for the last year or so, staff has been working on documents to outline our direction from an asset management perspective, more specifically, are we managing not just our engineered assets, but also our eco-assets? The document lays out the town's approach to that, including the rationale and what the town's experience has been so far. Nature and ecosystem services that it provides are a fundamental component of any municipal infrastructure system. Gibson's, much like other communities, also benefits from natural assets, and we have excellent ones, perhaps the better-known one, the Gibson's Aquifer, which provides day-in and day-out for a long time, and hopefully for a long time in the future, for our storage and filtration, as an example. Also, our creeks receive, treat, store, and convey the vast majority of the stormwater in Gibson's. And we shouldn't forget also the role that our three kilometers of foreshore play in being still, vast majority of it still in natural state, so that natural sewer wall in sort of a green shores state, it provides great benefits to the community, and I'll get into some of those benefits in a bit as well. We're also looking at the role that soil, being in the sports fields, or the frontyard, or other areas, vegetated areas, and our forested areas, or woodlands, as we refer to it here, what role they play as well, in particularly around the retention of rainwater, stormwater. In essence, you know, infrastructure itself, as we know it, doesn't exist sort of in a vacuum, and it is in fact highly connected and dependent on the natural world. We're all familiar with traditional types of assets, pipes, roads, buildings, and so on, but we shouldn't forget the natural assets around us, water, land, soil, and trees. We all hear lots about ecosystem services, and you know, there's a vast number of that, and we certainly know experts in that by any means. Our focus is relatively narrow, and is in the ecosystem services that provide a municipal function or a service, as opposed to habitat or pollination or these other services, which are of course extremely valuable, but are well outside of the town's jurisdiction or control for that matter. So about two years ago, when council adopted its last strategic plan, it redefined what infrastructure means, and at the time, it was one of the earlier acceptance of the fact that, you know, in essence stating the obvious, that our infrastructure includes also a natural inheritance of natural assets, and the importance of being good stewards of that. Our official community plan also contains a large section on natural assets, and during the discussions with the community, that was certainly one of the higher-supported aspects of the plan. And in June of last year, council adopted the asset management plan presented by the Director of Engineering that formally introduced three classes of assets, natural and non-natural assets. Keep me in mind that, you know, it's, we actually think there are three types of assets, the natural ones, as I spoke about, and there's sort of what's described as biomimicry or nature-like assets. Those are things like you see in parkland subdivision, for example, swales and so on, where we design to mimic nature as opposed to a natural one like a creek. And of course, the just-as-needed one, engineered assets as well as we know them more traditionally. We've also been reviewing our practices around natural assets. We're concerned, having a review of the impacts that we have on the natural world and the natural assets, particularly around stormwater outfalls and so on, and also our own day-to-day activities, how we maintain these riparian areas as an example, and the parks, department, and the public works. Already sort of well-versed in the subject, but we still feel that's important to improve their training so that we're keeping up with more updated practices. This has been an interesting question, and often, it's a challenging question, which is what is the asset worth? And we're not necessarily trying to find a trigger of value to nature, what we're trying to find is what is the value of the service that we receive? And that's important because we're dependent on those services, and so how do we prepare from a risk and liability perspective to, for example, if the natural assets in White Tower Park that delivers stormwater management, if they fail, what does our plan be to replace those assets? And I think it's important we have an understanding of what that is. We're also trying to understand what is the level of investment that's required. Our experience to date shows that it requires a very low level of investment to maintain a high-quality asset. As an example, the Gibson's Aquifer requires, at this point, we're investing about $28,000 in monitoring, which is a fraction of what communities that have built water storage would require to put aside. $28,000 wouldn't even begin to cover a storage facility as such as the Gibson's Aquifer. We've also had discussions with the province and FCM, including the folks from Green Municipal Funds, to make sure that the granting programs and funding programs, whether it's the Build Canada Fund and others, are aware, aren't inadvertently penalizing a town like Gibson's that wants to do work on an aquifer or creek or foreshore versus somebody else that is doing work on a hard asset. And so some amendments have been made to Green Municipal Fund to recognize that, and discussions we've had with the province, it is understood on their part that we will not be penalized if we, not just us, but anybody, will be required, will be recognized in those funds as well. Two weeks ago, we had four students that spent the day with myself and Wendy Gilbertson as well, they're students, graduating students from the CIT, they are studying ecological economics, and they are helping us to determine the value of the services that we get. They're led by Michelle Molnar, who works with the David Suzuki Foundation, she's a chief economist, and Lorraine, our Deputy Director of Finance, is also involved in creating, well, first of all, is identifying the services I was mentioning earlier, and trying to attribute a replacement cost, a replacement value for those services. And also, you might recall from the statement in the financial statements, that we don't have a standard to attribute a value to the asset, but we're interested in defining one and the opportunity that that brings, not only from a reporting purposes, but also from a budgeting perspective. And so that's an interesting, well, interesting for me anyway, having fun with that aspect of it, and we'll see what we can do. In terms of motivation for recognizing and taking action around natural assets, it's a financial motivation, because unlike other assets, it didn't cost the town any money to use the asset in the first place. We don't have to set aside any sort of ACFA or replacement cost, and if we maintain it properly, in some cases you might have to improve the asset, the depreciation costs are, you know, don't apply in this case. And as experience shows so far, they come with lower operating costs. Our goal, from an asset management perspective, is to ultimately have the most natural, the most energy-efficient, reliable infrastructure that costs the least amount to the taxpayer over the long term. And over the last few years, and we're about to begin more budget discussions, we've been trying to price sort of a fair price policy so that utilities such as water and sewer, in essence, pay for themselves as they should. We've also done a lot of work over the years in conservation, in water conservation, and that has provided also economic benefits to the community because the nearly 40% that we've saved on water consumption in five years or so would have meant that in the absence of that conservation, we would have had to build a secondary reservoir, parkland, as an example. And that's also why we encourage more density within existing infrastructure because we're getting more use for the same amount of infrastructure. To support this change, including the management of natural assets, which were for the most part already involved, we've also been working increasingly as teams as opposed to departments, and two areas that I can point to are in the foreshore area where, you know, we don't have sort of each department with their own set of plans and projects. We all work out of the same plan per se, and likewise, as White Tower, there's much greater coordination between parks and public works and planning on how to maintain the asset itself. We're also conscientious and aware of the fact that, you know, of the three types of work that we can do, it is substantially cheaper in the short and the long term to do as much work as possible around preventive maintenance. That's where we should be spending the majority of our time. It's not always under our control, but it is a principle that is often gets forget, forgotten, and another change that we've made is to introduce new technology, so we move our asset management from sort of a paper-based type of approach to a technology-based from paper to pad. We, starting last year, acquired a piece of software that allows us to, our staff to see in real time exactly where each piece of infrastructure is in the town and respond accordingly and in a much more efficient manner. Counselor Sanjanko will appreciate that we can never tell enough of our story, and we've tried three different approaches because communication is not always our natural forte. Two years ago, we had a very successful walk-on-water tour, which we want to make permanent, and it's will be a consideration for you on the budget as well. In a partnership with Art Farm, we had a successful year last year of engaging with hundreds of elementary school kids who worked in curriculum throughout the year, breaking down their own version, using art as a metaphor to explain the 504-page aquifer mapping report PDF, which is hard to motivate anyone, but art certainly played a great role, and after a successful summer camp, some of the works in fact have displayed here in the lobby and other places as well. Late last year, we had a very successful mini art crawl at the Arts Building as well. And we've dedicated a page on the website, on our website, to explain to the community what this is and what it means, and of course, the publication that is in your package today as well. So the report and the recommendation is that asking council, the committee to recommend endorsement of the strategy as presented, and I also want to acknowledge that this work was done in-house, the graphics by And I also want to acknowledge that this work was done in-house, the graphics by Lizette Fisher, and the writing through the asset management team, including our director of engineering, finance, deputy director of finance, Andre and myself. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you, Manny. And yes, it's a very professional-looking report, and I know that you've put a lot of time into this, and that this is a topic that's very near and dear to you. And as I said, I'm a little bit my eyes glaze over. I did appreciate, I asked you for real content, and the one you did bring up was moving towards that being recognized as the type of thing that would be available for grant funding as well, and so that is a potential real result, so that's good. Councillor Saint-Jean.
I communicated something today on Facebook, because that's one of the ways I do. And I just wanted to say to staff as well, that, you know, a few years ago, we had a number of things that we were really proud of, water and our livability, but it's nice to see this report coming forward, and I, I'm really proud of the work that's being done here. And Manny kind of glazed over the very end of the report, but to me, that's what I really looked at, and it's that other people are recognizing the work that's being done in Gibson's at a national level, in the public sector, and that staff has been going around talking about the work that's being done in Gibson's. And that's, that's what is showing our leadership in this area and making us champions in this regard. And the proudest I am is that, you know, the last paragraph, that the United Nations is even paying attention to the works that's being done, and that gets worldwide distribution. So I just wanted to again thank your team and the staff for this great work.
Thank you very much. Councillor White.
I too feel that this is a really exciting and innovative project that I hope council enthusiastically endorses. I, I think the highest value too, which is mentioned in here, is just the change in perspective in regards to infrastructure, and that's not just for council, but for all citizens in the town. I have a few questions. And when is, regarding adapting the financial statements, I mean, it's a bit ironic that I think was part of the bold impetus for this was, was looking at, looking at standards for financial statements and assets, and that really, when it comes down to it, with accounting standards, we can only provide a text explanation of what we're doing in natural assets. And I'm wondering if any more, any more work, I mean, I recognize there's a financial plan as part of the, part of the points that we're hoping to accomplish, if any more work can be done to adapt the financial statements, and as, even if they don't fit into accounting standards, as possibly an addendum or an alternative kind of budget to, to change that outlook. I know, I know financial standards are very tight, but just kind of in an informal way to present the first public consumption especially.
I think, through you, Mr. Mayor, beyond that statement, the statement was interesting, because when we first asked, you know, the town, in essence, what we were arguing was that the $47 million that were sort of worth on paper is not a true reflection of the value of our assets. And so how do we go about making that number? At that point, this is about a year ago, we were looking for an acknowledgement that that wasn't the true value. But even sort of adding an asterisk to that number was challenging, so we ended up with a note, which is better than nothing. There's an opportunity to include the actual strategy itself into the annual report. We're, we're, and my view is that we're two to three years away from having a standard. The last time the Canadian Public Sector Accounting Board developed a standard for us, it was in 2009. It was called PSAP 3150. I'd like to develop 3151, and what exactly that accounts for, I'm not sure. What I do know is that we have access to the better brains in North America on the subject, the Natural Capital Project is North America-wide, and the leaders on the Canadian side are aware of our project, and they're, Michelle is one of them. And so I'm confident that we can develop something that is authentic and it's real. And in fact, in terms of, just picking up from what Councillor Saint-Jean was mentioning, a change of framework, with the introduction of this document, it makes every other asset management plan some half-done, because they only have half of their assets. And every community will have a different blend mixture of natural and non-natural. So we're, in that sense, also changing that conversation from a, okay.
Couple of questions. How, how does the strategy account for natural assets that extend beyond the town's boundaries or even outside of the town's boundary, the aquifer as an example? And another one just came to me this morning at the SCRD, a resident from Area E raised the concern that there's a watershed of reserve or backup consideration for the town in Area E, which, which is, which is under threat apparently, according to the information I got this morning, that there's, there's interest in logging it. So how does that fit into the strategy of areas that are outside of the town or extending out of the town?
The aquifer recharge area is a good example of a natural asset to the community that's outside of our jurisdiction. It's outside of the regional district jurisdiction in fact, and it sits with the province. The short answer is sort of working with our partners. And in the case of the regional district, we're asking them, you know, through a fringe area plan, to recognize in their development approvals, the location of the aquifer recharge area. And, you know, likewise, if our drinking water, I think for, so, the short answer is, you know, working with our partners and sort of on a case-by-case basis. I've had conversations with the municipality of the environment around the folks that do ecosystems management, and in essence, that, you know, it doesn't change anything from the perspective of who owns what, that we certainly are not going to be taking over anybody's creek or our own creek, for that matter. The riparian area regulations will continue to apply to the private sector and us in that case. So all of that, I think we'll have to work within the existing frameworks and through partnerships. One of the benefits of the strategy is that, you know, it frames the conversation relatively quickly to explain what we're doing and why, and I think that will help.
Mr. Mitchel.
Some of this comes with a great deal of guilt, because I was at the LGLA, the people were, some of the councillors were coming up for me from Courtney and Sydney and places congratulating me on, on this. And, you know, I was, so I'm going to pass that along to you right now. So anyway, I think it's great, you know, I fully support all this. And I had a question, maybe it's too much to ask, but do you think any of this can spill over to even like, you know, private property, like during development and stuff like that? Like if you say air quality, and say erosion or anything like that? So, you know, so many times you see when people develop, you know, a good example would be, okay, sorry, I don't know the street, it's just above Hopkins Landing there, but they basically cut down every tree in the whole development phase. Do you think, you know, any of this can spill over and provide a framework or, or something for development? It's just, just curious.
Yes, I, I hope so. Certainly one of my own personal objectives, I, I think if we had arrived today and in Gibson's, and there was nothing else here done, sort of a green, green site, you know, the idea that we would level the whole thing down to clay and build everything on top of it, it would seem somewhat, you know, crazy, pardon the expression, but we still do that somewhat on smaller lots. One of the benefits, I think, of these documents is it adds value to our requirements in that, I think, on a larger site, sort of something to be subdivided, we will be encouraging, I think, how we look at it, we first we see where the natural value is, whether it's slope retention, the sort of the value of trees and water on site and so on, whatever you can find sort of a natural asset or where to do that work, why would you want to replicate that with an engineered system that you have to put money upfront and replace within 30 or 40 years? So to that end, I think we'll make, you know, David and Andre's conversations with the development community easier, and, and also should serve as an inspiration to others, whether it's in your own lot, or your own subdivision, or your own community to, to look at as we're looking at it.
Councillor Blair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see this as a bold step, and I wholeheartedly support endorsing it. Just thinking through the, the risk of valuing natural assets, and the only, the only big risk I can see is that you might overvalue a natural asset. So, and certainly, you know, you could see some depreciation due to climate change, so I'm just wondering whether this is another, I mean, sort of insurance will be one way that climate change has an impact on people's bottom line, but I'm wondering if this is a different way where climate change has a, actually depreciates our natural assets and, and goes against that, that figure that we put in. I don't know that we'll be borrowing against it as collateral anytime soon, but is that one way that we can put a dollar figure on climate change?
The, the value of the assets, my sense is that they will increase over time, because we're not making this stuff anymore, for one thing, in terms of simple economics. What we're just beginning to understand is also not just the value of, you know, sort of, of the asset itself, but when you quantify the value of the services that it provides over a period of time, you know, even in the absence of compound interest, it's extremely valuable. What we're trying to move away from, in sort of the next phase, is to get away from just saying that nature is nice. You know, it's not enough of a frame to sort of compete at a decision time. So we're trying to bring value to the decisions that you make by saying, here's the actual value of that service. And we can have that service delivered to our residents for this amount, as opposed to having to replace it with an engineered one for what appears to be a substantially greater amount. So it's important that we just say, we have a little bit more information beyond, you know, being nice and, but also from an overvaluation, it's tempting, I think, that to add more to, for example, values around recreation, tourism, health, and so on. It's perhaps one of the larger criticisms I hear so far, is folks thinking that the scope is somewhat limited, but I go back to what our core service is, and our core service is not air quality or habitat. I think if we can achieve that as a consequence of being good stewards of these assets, that's an added value that I guess we won't get in the way of.
Councillor White.
And my third question is about renewable energy, I'm wondering where that fits into the framework, the potential for renewable energy as well as the renewable energy we currently get from, from the geothermal project. And I guess that isn't defined in here or highlighted as one of the natural assets, but, and perhaps that's because of the unnatural aspect to it, maybe it's more of an engineered asset, but, and water works that way too, the aquifer, so I'm curious about where the line is drawn there.
The, the heat service that we receive from that system is a natural asset. Because the, the ground is the asset, and the heat is the service that we get. Now, we haven't accounted for the value of that heat, of that service. We've only accounted for, you know, the engineered assets that we've attached to it to collect that heat and use it. So to that end, I think at some point, as we work through, we, this is, has not been a sort of an exhaustive review of all the natural assets that we have, it just opens that conversation, I think, in the future. We're trying to start with the obvious ones, and, you know, as obvious as that one is as well. Now, in terms of renewable energy, and so more from a greenhouse gas perspective, which is ultimately what we're trying to do from a climate change perspective, is reduce the amount of CO2, of greenhouse gases in particular. The folks at the Climate Action Secretary, that, the discussions that we have, is their whole framework, the whole Climate Action Charter, it's about reducing emissions, you know, what you sort of might call mitigation. But there's still the adaptation side. And again, the, there's one component that the province hasn't really gone down the road of yet, is recognizing the storage, the carbon storage capacity of these assets. And our best ones are the forested areas, but there's a growing body of evidence around il grass, and so our il grass beds could potentially store the equivalent carbon that the community emits. I, but there's no, you know, they too are looking for a standard to see, you know, how much carbon does it go into sort of a square meter of il grass. We sort of avoided doing that at this point, because again, it gets outside of our scope of, you know, infrastructure. You know, il grass is not public infrastructure, as we know, in terms of delivering a municipal service, within the role that we have today. But it doesn't mean that it doesn't have value, and that it doesn't have carbon storage abilities.
David.
Oh, sorry. One other point in this, in the assets that have been identified, the ecosystems that have been identified in this document, is the, once you value it, it's also making sure that we put aside enough to maintain and operate it, so to speak. With the aquifer, it is our monitoring program, with, with the creeks, it would be inspections and erosion protection. So it's having a, we've identified the assets that we have, in a way, control over, over funding, appropriate maintenance budgets for it, to ensure that the value of the asset remains the same, monetary value remains the same. I think that probably is, is one difference as far as the district energy is, that we, we don't have as much control over, over the heat that the earth can store. It's probably is something that you can do, but that, that might be a dividing line as well, that could come in there.
Thank you. We probably weren't anticipating such a pertinent question, were you?
I do, I said.
Councillor White.
Okay, moved by Councillor White, second Councillor Blair, if you all have favor then. It's carried. Hey, thank you very much for your work on that, Stan. Okay, move on to 5.2, may need land update, Andre, this is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I prepared a presentation to summarize the report for you, so I just have to start it up. And with this project, we're close at the end of the whole review process, and I include some of the previous steps to make sure that everybody gets updated on what happened before. So these are a couple of the topics, these are the topics of this presentation, looking at changes that were made throughout the process that started in 2013. And also looking at the amendments that were discussed or proposed in the council in October. This was the process that we were set out to do, we started in 2014, and updates to the official official community plan, mostly to add a couple of topics that were added to the legislation. They were required content. Also, we had a SMART plan year overall. So it's safe to say, general OCP for the whole town was drafted in 2005, then we added neighborhood plans later on, and there were some overlap and there were some, also some gaps. So this one-year process, it was optimistically planned that way, but would take into account a lot of public input, work with the steering committee and do a background on the existing document and a review of the existing documents, and then end up with an updated official community plan. And during those different phases, we had a lot of input from steering committee of around fifteen people, some of you were actually under, and, but also from the community at large, for open houses and questionnaires. Phase two was our most intensive phase where we had drafts and directions of policies that we wanted to add, and we had a lot of people respond to that and provide the asset of input. We also had something called OCP pizza nights, which were self-selected groups that could get together to go through a little workbook about the OCP, and we were reimbursing for pizza. And at the last phase, it was in June, we had another questionnaire to check if the draft document was heading the mark. So the result that we have today, the document that you got in a separate cover in a binder, it's down in size, mainly because the attachments are gone. We did add materials in it, so it didn't get down as much as I was hoping. It's still, it's fairly efficient now. It's still a big collection, of course, of ideas for the future, and not everything will be done right away next year, and that's fine. It's a, it's a long-term plan. It's a twenty-year plan, so it will be revised in the future, of course, but it gives us direction for the next twenty years. And the things that were added were specifically a development permit area for the Gibson's aquifer, climate change and greenhouse gas reduction goals, climate change policies, policies for sea level rise, they were improved, they're actually part of the harbor area plan, but they got promoted to be in the general part of the plan, co-of-management, and also the eco-asset strategy. But also was added is this vision, the OCP didn't have an overall vision statement, so this is the statement that we came up with. A lot of people have lots of suggestions about it. We played with it a lot several times, new versions, new words, but this is what we ended up with, seems to capture it as good as we can. And then the work in the harbor area plan, this was another topic that was quite hotly debated throughout the year, last year, and we did make some changes to the harbor area plan because it was felt that it was quite vague on how form and character would be implemented. And, so this is a policy that was added to the harbor area plan, and it very succinctly outlines what would be expected there. And this is something that was developed based on ideas and input from the steering committee. And it basically outlines that in the harbor area, generally, we would be looking at building heights of one or two stories on the higher side of the lots, usually those lots are on slope, and on the lower end you have three to four, take advantage of that grade. And also it outlines that would be exceptions possible, but they would need to go through an ocean amendment, OCP amendment process to be considered on a case-by-case basis. And another spot where we improved and tightened up our expectations around form and character in harbor area plans and the design guidelines for the harbor area, we expanded on some of the view protection related guidelines, and especially the second bullet with text about development proposals that don't conform to the expectation about height and massing of the zoning bylaw. It specifically says now that those applicants are required to show exactly what they have in mind or what impact it may have, and that suggests that maybe a 3D model is a good way to do that. And that's added in the SMART plan in the harbor permit area number five. Next section deals very of the specific proposals that were made in October by Council Department. One of them, the first one, has to do with the residential tourist accommodation that is in the harbor area plan, which is actually now in the general plan. And this was something too that was discussed in the OCP steering committee. It was, the question was, can we specify at this point what the actual density or the floor space is that we would allow in those particular sites? Actually, there are three sites. So for residential tourist accommodation, there's one there around the English House on the corner of School Road and Gibson's Way. And the second side is, it's a larger side, it includes the proposed George Hotel side, but also the Shoal Bay side. And then the third side is over here where the existing Gibson Garden is located. And we, we had quite a discussion on that over the summer and amongst the plans we discussed, is that feasible, is it viable, is it a good thing? And our conclusion was that it was not a good thing because those sites are very different. Near Gibson's Way, for example, you're bordering directly to a single-family neighborhood next to White Garden Park, it's, there's more space around that site. So those sites are very different. You can't really say, well, this fits for every site, so we left it open, although we still added those other provisions that I just mentioned to you. So, and we're still in the same opinion, so in response to that particular proposal, we're recommending not to do that as staff and consultants. Then there's a couple of other proposed amendments that I can touch on quite quickly, I think, and feel free, the council members that like to have more extensive discussion, absolutely, let me know. And number two was about making references to a particular economic modeling report that was done in 2010, 2011. That one is actually already referenced on page four of the harbor area plan. Then there was a request or suggestion to look into specifically referencing an environmental assessment for the harbor authority, and we have added a note about contamination in the water area of the harbor, but that particular assessment doesn't need to be mentioned necessarily because the harbor authority is under federal jurisdiction. Demographic issues, we did make some further edits to that section to clarify things. Beach accesses, that was actually already a new section, and we further prepared that section by making sure that number two now also includes the undeveloped beach accesses. Number six is about text edits about linking the PA number five with the harbor area plan, and some of that is included in the current draft. Number seven was about text edits to change the wording about the economies of harbor area plan. However, that text was part of the vision statement of the harbor area plan, so we don't feel comfortable making changes to the core vision statement of a plan like that because it was developed recently and shouldn't be updated, just on the way, some to say. Then there was a proposal to add water courses specifically next to White Garden Park and next to Shoal Bay lands. And it's something that we do think is important in the future to have a look at that, but for the whole time, we need to take another look at how we deal with our streams, creeks, ditches overall, and could tie into our asset, eco-asset strategy, but also into updated provision requirements because our, our assessment that was done is from 2004 and the provision regulation around streams was different back then. So it's something that needs to be done sometime in the future. And then lastly, oh yeah, there were some suggestions to keep some of the notwithstanding clause. And it's, it's a particular guideline that was in the old plan, that's now deleted, but instead of that, we now have the additional guidance around stories that are expected in the area, and also the additional guideline in the, in the development permit area five. So we think that's already addressed and it's no need to kind of get that old text back. Okay, then moving on to referral comments, just a quick overview of what other agencies have to say about the current draft, OCP, agricultural lands commission, was talking about the need to buffer adjacent agricultural lands, mostly to the west of Cosmo Rock, but also there's an ALR area here on Main Road. And then that's some editorial changes in the, in the plan. Think of the coastal health, also responded to us already in the summer, and they were keen on seeing the town do more work on aquifer protection, obviously. Also some other suggestions that were added or, there were actually some policies in there already, but we updated the wording to cover their recommendations as well. Second, Coast Regional District is very keen to work with us on groundwater protection, and I hear it's still a current issue there, so that's great to hear. We are hoping to work on the fringe area agreement with the regional district to make sure we can protect the aquifer there as well. The Ministry of Transportation responded a couple of months ago, and they're highlighting the fact that Highway 101 needs to stay a regional connection, so, and therefore, the second bullet is quite important to the ministry, is it's very important that the town develop an internal road network within our town boundaries. And that's happening, it's in progress, but it takes time. For example, Uterov Road is a starting point of our east-west connector that will eventually connect to Sunny Crest Road that will not, not dead end at the police station, but actually will connect to Reed Road. So that's in the works, and they're, the ministry is very happy that that is in progress. So in summary, we did a OCP update project, a level overview, extensive public consultation, lots of advice from the community and from the steering committee and from some referral agencies, and we're ready to finalize this process. And what it still needs is readings on the bylaws, a public hearing and adoption. If council, if the committee today supports to move forward with the wrapping up of this project, this is what we have in mind to do in terms of promotion. There's a mailing list that we would use to bring people up to speed about the next steps, with the advertisements on the public hearing. We'd use our Reddit page and Facebook for notifications, and I've made arrangements that consultant Robert Vars, the lead consultant, would be present at the public hearing. I think it will be really important at the start to do a presentation of some of the highlights to, and also to be available to clarify any questions that may be. So these are the recommendations in front of you today, to receive the report, to forward the bylaw for second reading to council, and to consider a date for a public hearing, and either it could be Saturday or perhaps next week. There are two options that we have in mind, is to have Vars 10, that would be the day of the strategic planning session that I think is scheduled to be planned, or Vars 17, which is a regular meeting day. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Andre, and thank you for all the work that you've done in this particular project as well. And three current members of the council were on the steering committee as well, so we certainly recognize the work being put into it. I think the only comments I'll make before I just ask for any questions from council is, one, bear in mind that this was never intended to be a complete OCP rewrite. It was an update to incorporate some topics that were required to do and do some fine tuning. Secondly, previous council had budgeted $60,000 for the project and they've already hit $80,000, so we don't have much to, more than we can expand on this stuff. With those comments, I'll just open up if there's any questions or clarification that members of council require.
I'd like to comment on just another important set of documents that I found very, very important as a, a new councillor who wasn't involved in the committee, and that is the minutes of the steering committee. And there was, there was mention at one meeting that's recorded in the minutes about how it would be considered that for council, that, that the record of the minutes would be integral for councillors to, to look at, to consider all the discussion that came up and all the considerations that came up. And I found them to be very thorough, the minutes, and got a good feel for the discussions and the different alternatives and options that came forward. And I'm certainly, because of the thoroughness, I'm satisfied that, that the steering committee's direction by consensus is, is reflected in the plan despite the amendments that came, came forward later. And I'm also satisfied that those amendments have been thoroughly considered as well. It's, that's evident in the staff report. I think it's evident that some of that, some of those suggestions even have been integrated into, into the report since that time. So I wanted to make that statement, and I also, I think that the clarification, it's, it came up a couple of times in, in the presentation we just saw about form and character is very clear about, and it's included in the report twice, I think, the mention as a response of that building height should generally be limited to one or two stories, the higher side of the lot, three or four stories. I really appreciate that, and I think the, the committee was wise to support such a clear statement because there's a lack of clarity, and, you know, the notwithstanding clause was brought up by, by many people in the process. So I think that's, that's a good, you know, it's a good fix that really addresses a lot of the concerns that were brought up by, by people from various different perspectives, I think. So I think we can point to that quite a bit and say that, that there is some, so there, there's some clarity about form and character that was lacking from, from the plan before. And I do want to clarify that the floor space ratio concern, I mean, that's something that came up in the minutes when I, when I read them, there was, there was a response from staff at the committee meeting saying that that direction from the committee would be considered and in time, there would be some numbers applied. I think that was the suggestion. I think what I'm hearing today is that once, when it was considered by staff, it was actually decided that it's probably not a good idea to, to apply prescriptive numbers to the floor space ratio for, for the residential tourist accommodation. So I just want to confirm that, that despite the fact that that was, that was the direction that was accepted by staff from the committee, that once, once it was considered with consultant, consultant, it was decided that that's not, that that was not the best route to go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it ties into the other changes that we made to give more clarity, so I don't think it's essential. It might come up in the future and it could be done. The discussion also looked at if we would add FSR for the commercial designations, for example. That's another one that is pretty hard to do because you have, on the one hand, small commercial properties down below, but also very large one up the hill. So that's correct. So I think with the, the changes that we have made now, I don't see a big need for it, but if there, if it would come up in the future, we could definitely look into it, but it requires more research and consultation.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions. I didn't know, well, this is, I guess, through to the director of planning. I know the language says generally limited to one or two stories. Is there a specific concrete height of each story? Like, is that, is that set out somewhere? Was it in the, is there, is there a concrete height of a story?
You, Mr. Mayor, not particularly in the official community plan, no. The zoning bylaw would give particular heights, and there is a particular way to measure height under the zoning bylaw. So really, the zoning bylaw would control the exact height, and this is more of a general statement about the form and character. So it leaves it a bit open, but there's also, on any site you will have zoning, and either people apply to change zoning or the zoning that's currently in place will advise, and that will give the details, so, yeah. But typically, if you want a rough guide, you would take three meters for every story because there's always construction materials in between and whatnot. And if the slopes in the area, you would combine, it would be both one to two stories and three to four depending on the slope because you just start at the higher side and then at the lower end you would definitely have probably more than, you would definitely have more than one story, I think.
I just, I might add to that, Councilor Delaria, it's important, excuse me, it's important not to mix sort of the zoning requirements, which are very specific, with sort of guide, form and character guidelines that are intended to sort of set a general tone.
Do you have another question?
Thank you. Just want to recognize that staff has undertaken a monumental task of incorporating input from, in a lot of different forums over a long, long timeline. And I'm satisfied with the latest round of change, and I appreciate that those have been made. If there's anything missing, I anticipate that it'll be aired in the public hearing, or if there's anything that we really haven't addressed, then it'll be, we'll find out at the public hearing. So that's, I believe, is the proper next step.
Thank you. All right, so nothing further? If somebody wants to move those recommendations, councillor White, thank you, councillor Sencenko, all in favor, and that's Kerry. Thank you for your work on that, Andre. 5.3, garden suite zoning bylaw text change.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll give a quick introduction, just to get to my board. I do, I do have the presentation available, but I thought it was maybe a bit too much to do today, so it is attached to the report for if you need more information. This program was also developed in the last year. Two areas have been selected, one that was already designated in the current OCP and one that we, that came up with council, actually, in the last term. It's almost at the end, it also weighs on the OCP because the garden suite zoning changes go together with the Dublin permit area in the OCP. Now, we did notice a particular issue, and that's on page 65, and the map kind of illustrates that. It's a particular street that we are looking at to allow garden suites, but we don't have the full road width there just yet. And the issue basically comes down to the fact that the proposed bylaw, as it says now, does allow garden suites there, and that's also what we'd like to see there, but it doesn't really say anything about that road width that we need there. So what needs to be done is to make sure that if people want to build a garden suite in that particular area, we need to make sure as a town that we do get proper road width for Steinburne, which is a new road. And that's what the proposed change will do, and it will make the little reservations, I'd say, in that area, that the property is eligible for garden suites, as long as it's, the road width has been provided and certain finishes to the road have been installed. Yeah, that's the key call of that document. Thank you.
So what happened? Did you have an aha moment in the middle of the night?
Yeah, I think they did, no, actually, yeah, the guy next to me, the director of engineering, was worried, looking out for the services that he needs in town, and he said, "Well, how about this road here? How would it work here?" So...
It's about 2:30 a.m., I think.
Councillor White? I'll move that 5.3. All right, recommendation. Fine, second to that. Councillor Valeria? All in favor then? And that's Kerry. Okay, thank you for catching that. 5.4, the Gibson's Act for Development Permits, delegation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Another report that has been in the works, or a topic that has been in the works, the development permit area for the aquifer is included in the proposed OCP, and the attached presentation provides you with the highlights. Feel free to ask some questions about that, too. But this report is about the delegation of the authority to issue those permits. Development permits by default are for council to consider, so the types of development permits we have in town are form and character, which go to council, but also for environmentally sensitive areas and geotechnical hazards. Those don't go to council, they go to, to meet the director of planning for review. This particular new one for the aquifer is also a technical one, like the geotechnical hazards and the environmentally sensitive areas, and it works closely, it has a close relation with the water regulation bylaw, where the director of engineering here next to me is in charge of administering that bylaw. So for that reason, in the past, last summer, council started to process the bylaw to delegate the authority to issue DPs for the aquifer to the director of engineer, and that bylaw is in process. And I just wanted to make sure that you're informed about that bylaw being in process because it will come back then, if you support it today still, to council next week for the next readings. And there's also two other bylaws that's more administrative nature, deals with updating our fees and charges and moving them over to our rates and fees and charges bylaw, and those are more administrative in nature. But the real decision there, if this bylaw gets adopted, is that council has the director of engineer to administer those development permits.
Thank you. Any clarification? No, I'll move that. Councillor White moves that. Second, councillor Sencenko, all in favor then? And that's Kerry. Good. Would council like to take 10 minutes before we begin this point, before we start? I'm just trying to say, yeah, we're going to be out for an hour, and, no, we don't think so. All right, let's push on, we'll see where we get to here. Okay, Selena, quick intro.
I'm not sure why I'm always at the end and have to do the quick, the quick, other one, but I'll do my best. I think you've got the report, so you're aware of the requirements of the committee charter to establish a bylaw and the purpose of that bylaw. And I think by its very nature, it's a procedural bylaw, so it's a lot more detailed than a policy document would be. The current bylaw was established based on a template provided by the ministry responsible for local governments. It was developed as a best practices for local governments. It's only been amended once in 2008, so it is definitely due for a review. Staff went through the ministry's categories of requirement for a bylaw and annotated the table that's attached, so the council gets a clear picture on what's mandatory, what's optional, and what fits within some variation of mandatory or optional. The recommendations in the table are based on that. The other step that I take when I'm reviewing any document with a view to changing it is to apply a test of harm, where I ask myself, is there harm to leaving this clause in? And conversely, are there some potential future implications to taking it out? So I tend to err on the side of caution and leave in unless it really should come out. So at this point, if council can just provide direction on the clauses that you would like to see removed or amended, or if there's some that you would like to have added, then staff can take this back, apply a modern, a more modern style of writing to it, and bring it back to council for consideration of readings. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, I mean, one possibility here is I can just go through the clauses and there's a staff recommendation there, if nobody's raising anything, then finally we just move on, or if people have zeroed in on one or two that they simply want to deal with, we can go it that way. Do you have a sense of that?
Whichever you prefer. I have two points, yeah.
Yeah, all right, so I'll just start and we'll see where it gets to then. So basically, if you look at, say, number two there, clause two, there's a staff recommendation here. So I'm not hearing any issues around that, I'm moving on. Three, same thing. Four. Five. Okay, five. Councillor Valeria?
Yeah, just on regular council meetings, sorry, subsection two, begin at 7:00 p.m. and be adjourned at 10:00 p.m. I'm, I just wanted to open the discussion for the committee, or sorry, council's effectiveness after sort of the two-hour mark of a meeting, whether we should at least aspirationally be trying to finish at nine or 9:30. Of course, it can always be extended, but tend to seems like, oh, to put a benchmark there, a three-hour meeting, I just feel like we should, we should be aiming to conduct our business, finish our business by, I would say, nine, but there's room for compromise. So I just, I believe we started to windle in terms of our forward focus at a certain point, and then there's some, we don't need, it doesn't need to be in here, but there is some requirement for a short break, I think, after a few-hour mark.
Okay. Is there any comments on that, Selena?
No, that's totally up to council's discretion.
Councillor Sencenko?
I agree.
Nine o'clock, is that okay? Five, then, change that to 9:00 p.m. Understanding, of course, as it says, it can be extended with the, that's a majority resolution, that's not a unanimous resolution, any?
I don't think it's unanimous consent of those present to extent. I'm not sure if it should be right.
It says, okay, but it says, we're sorry, was it unanimous in there somewhere? Did I miss it?
You'll find that over in section 14, I believe, down to the German.
I think that the issue is, we had in the past, certainly, it required unanimous consent to an extent, past that, the time, so to be clear, that's still...
I believe there's unanimous consent.
Okay.
We'll find it as we go through.
Yeah, so, okay, so that one, you're going to say 9:00 p.m. All right. Okay, number six. Number seven. Number eight. Eight, there's a second, the electronic eight is actually number nine, right?
Yes.
Ten. Eleven. Twelve. Thirteen. I think I had it very well. Fourteen, and you're going to move, you're going to merge fourteen and thirteen, is that what you're suggesting there?
Yeah, it just seemed like a better fit, Mayor.
Fifteen. Sixteen.
Can I bring up a couple of points on sixteen?
Sixteen, okay, go ahead, councillor Sencenko.
And I apologize ahead of time if this is actually a policy document conversation or if this actually belongs in here, so I'm just going to bring it up. My point is, with the order of business, I don't have a problem with the order of business as listed here, and thank you for the consulting other municipalities for council meetings. I just wanted to bring up the point when we were at GLA, that we had a workshop on how committee of the whole meetings could be set up in a bit more of a, more of a working type setting with not quite such a formal, so maybe when you go back to your, anyway, I just wanted to have that conversation. We definitely had a really good workshop about how this was much more structured, but that to be most effective at the committee of the whole, so it's not just a dress rehearsal for council. It looked different, it felt different, the agenda was different, and I really wanted to take a look at that with council's approval, if they were willing to have a look at that, to maybe dig into that a little bit with his, I think he has some tools he's willing to share and whatnot. So I just wanted to bring that up before we just went through and said this is how we want it for council.
Seventeen.
Councillor Valeria? Maybe there's just a couple. I, I'm just trying to sort through whether, this order is a regular council meeting, so we could, we are still open, I made this question for the corporate officer, we're still open to a different order of business for committee at all, is that as councillor Sencenko was suggesting?
Yeah, exactly. If you adopt sixteen as it is, committee is still a modified version of that, so you have more flexibility.
Thank you.
And then, just a couple things under sixteen, subsection two. Two, each individual must state their name and residential address, from a privacy point of view, could we change that to their municipality of residence or electoral area resident?
Yeah, absolutely, but an individual standing up to speak in a public meeting has no perception of privacy. It's recorded, it's, yeah, but absolutely we can.
As to their place of, actual place of residence?
I think maybe councillor Valeria has a point there. I know this issue was raised in other locations about people giving out, you know, their actual street address, for example, and I think that's what you're raising. But basically, what we want to know is, quite frankly, what I want to know is, am I talking to someone who is a resident of, and resident or property owner of town Gibson's, or am I hearing from somebody somewhere else? Not to discount what they have to say, but I need to know, or would like to know, I guess, that. So I think it's just, yeah, resident jurisdiction. You're going to work on this anyway, but I...
Leave it with me, yeah.
Yeah, I think I would agree, it doesn't have to be their actual street address, not in this context.
So if we say jurisdiction of residence, I live in Elton, but I'm called Gibson's, as it's Westhouse Town.
We'll leave that for you to work on, but I think it's a valid point that's raised there.
I guess it could be street name, not necessarily number. Sorry, and just one more under two D. Maximum time allotted for inquiries shall be 10 minutes. I recall other situations where that's been extended by council, is that a possibility? I don't see any language directly related to this, but could that 10-minute inquiry period be extended at any time, I guess, by council? Are we actually limited to cutting it off 10 minutes of, under our circumstances?
My response to that is council can resolve to extend it. Yeah. Councillor Sencenko?
I just have one other comment and question about inquiries, and just a thought for other people's comments. I'm still going back and forth in my own mind about having the inquiries at the beginning or the end of a meeting, and for myself, having an inquiry at the beginning of the meeting that was focused on the matters in the agenda, and then having a media inquiry at the end of a meeting, where the media got an opportunity to ask for clarification at the end of a meeting, also makes sense to me, rather than only having inquiries at the beginning. I just want to tell other people, helpful of us. So this is at the end. Yeah, right now, we're at the end, and I guess I'm saying, I'm also okay with inquiries at the beginning of a meeting, if it's focused on what we're looking at in the agenda.
I'm sorry, but up to your discretion.
Anybody got strong feelings on this, councillor Valeria?
I was originally thinking about inquiries at the beginning, and the more I think about it, I'm satisfied with the end, I just think there's possibility of inquiries of something that's going to be covered anyway. So I landed on, and, but I'm concerned, I am concerned about the time, in case there are a lot of inquiries, so I understand why you may want, I guess, it came down to, is this public, is this public consultation or is it inquiries? And I think in my own mind, I landed on, this is not the way to be consulting with the public. So in that case, we're not, there's nothing at the beginning of the meeting that we need to hear to conduct the meeting, but certainly at the end, focused on what's just happened makes a lot more sense to me. But I think...
I think I would, I would support that view. Okay. I don't know, do you have any other? So seventeen. Eighteen.
You're really upsetting me, councillor White. I submitted all my thoughts already, extensive documents.
Nineteen.
I'm going to take councillor White's place here. You've converted me, and now I'm the only one left. Just seventeen, one C, I'll start, high community...
Seventeen?
Yeah.
One C, yes.
One C, high community public interest, I just, I find it so subjective. My suggestion would just be that it gets deleted, it's just, it's a burden on the corporate officer, I think, to try and quantify what that is. I think if that's the case, it'll come under one of these other, under one of these other... So, okay.
You know, I think I can support that as well, thinking that out, so I'll take that one out. Okay, nineteen.
Councillor Valeria? We're sorry, we are going back to two delegations, is that right? That's probably what it says, two D.
Yeah, there's a note that we either stay at, sorry, we asked at three, or we want to go down to two and increase it to 15 minutes.
So, my preference would be two, at a total length of half an hour, so 10 minutes for the presentation, five for the... so ten minutes for the presentation, five for the questions, depending on how the two delegations fit together. But not to go back, and what I said earlier, I am sort of tending towards half an hour for delegations, then maybe we leave a full hour, full two hours for council business. So that takes us back to nine-thirty, which I apologize for getting that mixed up. But if we can keep this to two delegations lasting no more than half an hour, however they are configured, and then limiting council business to an hour and a half, might maybe seem a little, a little tight, especially if it's unanimous consent. So finally, we just, we just can compromise at nine-thirty, and I'm, yeah, I thought we landed on two delegations, but I could be wrong.
I'm not quite sure, actually, what we did land on. I have, I have, sorry, that's what I recall. Two delegations?
Yeah, actually, in the last meeting, we didn't make any concrete decisions on anything, so what I presented in the left-hand column is what I presented on January sixth, with some discussion points in the right-hand column, what council had discussed, but no decisions were made.
Okay. All right, so what I'm, what I'm hearing then is, the preference here is for a maximum of two delegations, totaling fifteen minutes per delegation, inclusive of sort of question and answer, and is that, okay, is that all right? Yeah, Counsel Valerian?
Yeah, I just, my understanding is that we wanted to make sure that the presenter's had a full, full ten minutes, because we can't anticipate what the questions and answers are. So as long as their, that presentation's guaranteed the ten minutes, and we are, I don't know, we need to have, we discussed a five-minute cap on questions and answers that may or may not be useful, but it is somewhere, we're kind of aiming at a half-hour period for delegations and at full stop. So ten minutes in length, but this one says inclusive of follow-up, and I don't, I think it's hard to predict that, so I, I'll leave it to the corporate officer.
Counsel Valerian?
Yeah, I think it's, the main thing is important to, so the delegate knows how long they have. It's not really to do with our meeting length, it's like, you've got ten minutes, you've got twelve minutes, because they're gonna prepare, and they wanna do their best job, and at least they know how long they get to prepare for. So that's, I think that's the most important thing, so...
Selena, does that give you enough to, for something to get around?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Twenty, or more, sorry, on the, nineteen, ten. This is not for the bylaw, but just for discussion. If the corporate officer refuses to place a delegation on the agenda, is there a mechanism, I'd like there to be a mechanism, council find out for that, for it to be reported to council, so that we know, and that could be through a policy, through some other communication, but I'd like to know if one's refused for the various reasons that we've outlined.
Okay, so, that's better dealt with outside of the bylaw, or somehow in sort of administrative policy, I think, but, yeah, okay. No, it's a good point. Absolutely. Okay, twenty, thirty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, sorry, yeah, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty. Counsel Sanjanko?
I just wanted to highlight Counsel Valerian's last comment about the nine-thirty instead of nine PM, might say, with some base brief, and I just remember it's noted here again. Yeah, just in twenty-nine, I just wanted to make that, I see a three of it.
Okay, so nine-thirty, you agreed in both places? Okay, thank you, Counsel Valerian?
And I'm utterly confused at this point, because I really appreciate every organization that's going, but committee of the whole, is there any time aspiration for that? Because they're not, it's obviously not nine, nine-thirty PM. Are we, is there any mention left about how long committee of the whole may or may not take, or even when it starts?
No, there's actually no left in here.
It's a completely different thing. Basically, like, right now, council could resolve to end this meeting, and somebody just needs to bring forward the motion, and we're done. So, you know, if it became excessive in terms of time, was, the problem with the committee of the whole is sometimes you may be dealing with sort of fairly significant things, shall we say, that require much more than the usual time, might have to adjourn them or something. So it doesn't have the same restrictions around it, but as I say, council can always resolve to end the meeting at any time. Okay, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine. You guys, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, no?
We are.
Yes, well, that's fine, but yeah, we're gonna make sure nobody's objecting to being deleted. Fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven.
The recommendation is to remove part nine, which starts with clause fifty-seven.
Maybe because we don't have any commission meeting.
None that I'm aware of.
Then they can be established through separate terms of reference in any manner. So just removing all part nine then.
All of part nine, and all the references to commissions throughout the document?
Okay. Did you have any epiphany or something?
I sent a lot of energy into it and spent...
You did.
Yes, you did, and I very much appreciate it, actually.
You're not reading for third reading.
Aren't there first, second?
Counsel Valerian?
I'm excited to see the new version, but there's one, a big one, that I thought I was finished, but I'm not. So I have to take you back to sixteen. Page one fifteen. So, two-thirds of the way down the right-hand side, we've got a recommendation, the next one, so maintain order of business, one public inquiry at the end of the meeting, fine. I feel like if we're going to change that and reduce the number of inquiry periods, that this, support hosting town hall meetings on as a basis to associate engagement items that high community should go hand-in-hand with that. So I mean, I felt like that was important to do together, so I, you know, need to read the procedure bylaw again, but I would, I guess I would move that we make that recommend, that recommendation out of this committee, that we support hosting town hall meetings, so that we are acknowledging that we're removing an inquiry period, but we're actually committed to adding a true consultation mechanism, rather than trying to do it through inquiries.
That's not a foreign part of the bylaw, it's actually looking at that as a separate resolution that would be at the same time as the bylaw, I guess, is that?
No, that'll appear in the minutes that'll come to council from this meeting, through the recommendation from this committee.
All right. Okay, so you're gonna move that, then, Counsel Valerian? So, second, Counsel Sanjanko, all in favor? Carrie? Okay, you got enough direction to revise? Okay. So, any, just, what I think of it, we have to set some dates for budget meetings, and the dates that are being proposed at the moment are March second, ninth, and sixteen. Now, these are Mondays. Does that create a problem for anybody, sort of, first of all, for the day of the week?
For the...
Yeah, and that's the other thing, whether it should be morning or afternoons.
Afternoon?
Afternoon's preferable there, afternoon's preferable here, when you're yourself.
Till early afternoon, if possible, so ending at, ending at three. My window's ten to three, essentially. I can only set it to four.
Monday is...
That's what was being proposed at the moment. How is that fit for you? And so Monday's okay for you, Stafford?
Yep, well, yeah, morning's not good, but, yeah.
Sorry, afternoon's preferable, is that...
Yes, please.
What time do you agree?
Yeah, like one to three, or even noon to two, if that was easier for people, it's good.
I could do noon to two.
Noon to two, okay.
All right, so let's send out specific invites for those three dates, for twelve o'clock to two o'clock, and provide some sandwiches or something.
I did, done.
And then...
This is a question of being here all day.
Sorry?
Just ask here about Jitas, March ninth.
Okay. Well, that's an important one for you to be at.
Yeah, that's round two, I think.
Yeah. Okay, well, so we've got March second, and...
And the next day, we've got a conflict, yeah.
Sorry, the sixteenth's a conflict?
Well, the tenth, we've got strategic...
Oh, I see, yes.
Same day as budget, as CRD budget.
We did miss the last year, and we did go, we did do one, and then we had a week, and then we did a couple more, but...
Well, let's confirm the second and the sixteenth, I guess, and we'll have to, we'll have to sort of see where the other date fits in. Okay. Okay, any last inquiries here? Seen done, and then a scribble from Twitter, and then Counsel Sanjanko, Counsel Valerian, all in favor? Carrie, thank you very much for a productive and efficient meeting, Counsel.